Before we begin, I do need to read a notice. Chair Quigg is not here today, so I am going to be subbing in as the vice chair. I'll be chairing the meeting today. Important notice regarding today's planning commission meeting, May 17, 2021. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means, consistent with the State of California Executive Order N-29-20 dated March 17, 2020. By order of the Health Officer of San Mateo County directing all individuals living in the county to shelter at their place of residence, the governor has allowed local legislative bodies to hold public meetings via teleconference and to make public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body or state body to avoid public gatherings and has suspended all contrary provisions of the Brown Act. This meeting will be via video conference only and can be watched in real time on the Millbury Community Television Cable Channel 27 or on www.mctv.tv. The public cannot come to the Millbury Council Chamber to join this meeting as this is a remote meeting with no public location. To maximize time for public comment, members of the public are encouraged to provide comments by joining the Planning Commission meeting via Zoom. For web, visit https://zoom.us/ And then select "Join a Meeting" and enter meeting ID 81212851606. You may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. For dial-in comments, call 1699-900-6833. Enter meeting ID 81212851606 to speak. All public comments are subject to a three-minute time limit unless otherwise determined by the planning chair. And so with that, I'll call to order our Millbury Planning Commission meeting. And we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I believe we have a virtual flag. Okay, and if we can join the standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And may Administrator maybe have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Wong? You're in need, Commissioner Wong?
He's nodding his head.
You're nodding your head? Okay, we'll take that as an affirmative. Commissioner Joe?
Here.
Okay, and Commissioner Quigg is absent. As an excused absence.
Thank you. Excuse me, and then next on the agenda is Agenda Review. So do we have any items that require review? Me, the Commissioners? Okay, so seeing none, we have no minutes for this evening. And then next is Public Communication. So this is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item that is not on the agenda but under the purview of the Planning Commission. So do we have anybody who wishes to speak at this time?
No, we do not.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we do have one person in the attendee, no.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then next item six on the agenda is Consent Calendar. And I did, there are no discussion, there are no consent calendar items here. We'll go quickly through that. Number seven is Public Hearings. So item A is item A is the adoption of a resolution confirming review of the 2020 to 2025 five-year capital improvement program and fiscal year 2021 to 2022 capital improvement program budget and its conformance with the Millbury General Plan pursuant to California Government Code, Section 65401. So may we have the staff report, please?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Joe, I just wanted to, before we staff, before staffs present this item, I'd like to recommend that after the presentation, we open up to public hearing, public comments, and then after taking public comment that we continue this item to an uncertain uncertain date to allow staff to notice the project.
Any objections, everybody? Are you saying that we're not going to have questions from the Commissioners or?
We can still have questions just after the, during the, after closing the public comment period.
Okay, and then it'll be continued for notice, for future notice. Okay, I don't see any objections, so please go ahead.
All right. Let me turn the screen here. Are people able to see the screen? The presentation?
Not yet.
No, not yet.
Yes, now, this time, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Commission Chair, Planning Commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Sam Fielding, the Senior Planner for the Millbury Community Development Department, and I will be presenting this item tonight with Key Lim, the Public Works Director. Tonight, the project subject is the adoption of a resolution confirming review of the 2020-25 five-year capital improvement program and the fiscal year 2021-22 capital improvement program budget and its conformance with the Millbury General Plan pursuant to California Government Code, Section 65401. A little bit of information about 65401. Every year, the City Council considers for approval a budget for the first year of the five-year CIP. 65401 of the California Government Code requires that agencies that have an adopted general plan and capital improvement plan submit that to the city planning agency for review as to conformity with the adopted general plan or part thereof. The Planning Commission has been charged with this responsibility by the City Council. The determination of consistency or conformity is needed prior to the City Council's adoption of the CIP as part of the budget process. The council will use the Commission's determination for this purpose. So the capital improvement program projects include city facilities, streets, storm, water, sewer, parks, and community and downtown enhancement. And Key Lim of our Public Works Directors will now present this, these topics, these program, these program projects. So let me go ahead and put the, share that presentation on that.
Hey, Sam, I can just, if you would open up screen share for me, please?
Oh, okay, sure.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission, Key Lim, Public Works Director. Very nice to see you guys again tonight. So tonight, we'll be talking really quickly about the capital improvement program that actually we conducted a study session with the City Council on May 11 last Tuesday night. So we walked the City Council to the capital improvement program. And typically, we would adopt a two-year budget, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city had chosen to adopt a one-year budget. So tonight, I will be focusing on fiscal year 2021 and 2022 capital improvement program. Can the Planning Commission see the, see my screen now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So this is the same slideshow that we did last Tuesday. I'm going to skip through the budget scenario, the finance director, my son isn't here tonight. So I'm going to go straight dive into the capital improvement program. So first off, we want to discuss the pavement management systems of Millbury. So a couple, a couple, a quick summary. I want the Planning Commissioners to remember after tonight's quick presentation, pavement management goals. So we'll give you a quick little tutorial on pavement 101 and followed by pavement preservation principle, and then also the assessment findings, and lastly, understanding budget needs. We always know that we have more needs than what our financial resources can afford to do. So tonight, we'll be talking a little bit about how we select those streets that we are going to be paving in 2022. So real quickly, there are a couple pavement deterioration. The pictures to the, to the left is the oxidizing effect. Those have to do with environmental impact. And the pavement, the picture to the right is fatigue from heavy loading, and those could be from buses, from garbage truck, from school buses, and those are structural loading, and they tend to cause severe damage to our, to city streets. So these are the common type of pavement distress. A lot of the time, you would be seeing a lot of cracks along the pavement, and some of that, the very first picture to the left of some more environmental impact, there's weathering and leveling, reverberating. You would see you losing the fine coating of the top of the asphalt concrete. And then with that, we're going to have to start doing some pavement repair. And also, just really quickly, are we assigning a rating to our pavement condition index? We call it PCI Pavement Condition Index. For the most part, we'd like to have a score of 70s and above on our PCI. And Millbury, however, did not score as high because over the years, we have not spent a lot of investment on our street. So we have a score, a PCI score of 57. So next, I will be talking about pavement preservation principle. So what does that mean? That means we applying the right treatment to the right pavement at the right time, using the right material. So this is the deterioration curve of asphalt concrete. You would see at the very top, when you have a PCI index of closer to 100, let's say, for example, 75 and 80, a lot of the time, you will be able to prolong the life cycle of the street by doing a simple maintenance work like crack seal and flurry seal. And those typically cause about a dollar a square foot. So they're relatively inexpensive to maintain our street. So if you let the street deteriorate to a pavement condition index of less than 50, which is way about where the poor category is, and you are going to be looking at pretty substantial street overlay, and those could be asphalt concrete overlay or reconstruction, and that can get to, get pretty expensive to do. So when I talked about our good pavement management, the best option that we talk about is top-down. And those are typically with the PCI index of about 70s and up. So you have a fairly good structural base of the street still. So you could actually technically apply a seal coat like crack seal and slowly seal to the street, spending about a dollar per square foot, and you can prolong the street by another five to 10 years. And then the worst one would be bottoms-up. That means that the entire structural section of the street is essentially deteriorated. So we would have to rebuild the street from the bottom, including the structural self, concrete and, and the base. And then critical point management is something that we are trying to achieve, which is we try to get to do our pavement slowly, so type of inexpensive maintenance to our street when the PCI is still in a relatively good score. So this is the summary tables of Millbury City Streets. Streets are typically categorized in three categories. The one to the left, the functional classification. Material is by far the most important street functional classification, and they are typically streets like freeway, like US 101, 280. Those are material, El Camino is another example of material. And collector's streets are streets that tend to have a higher traffic volume. And in Millbury, collector's streets are Taylor, McNolia, Richmond, and those are, those are major streets that are all classified as collector's street. And then of which, we have about 30 miles of residential street, and those tend to be more like a cul-de-sac, dead-end street that have few vehicle trouble on it. And as you can see on the right, this are the PCI breakdown. What does that tell us? Historically, Millbury has been spending quite a lot of money maintaining all the material and collector. Therefore, we have a pavement condition index of 71 for arterial and 62 for collector while residential street. We suffer quite a bit, look at our overall score of 47, and that brings us to an average of 57. So understanding budget needs. Earlier, I talked about Millbury PCI score being about 57. So this is the analysis that we have done so far. So if Millbury is to continue to maintain a PCI score of 57, that means that we would have to spend a minimum of $2.7 million a year, where my cursor is at, so that we could maintain this yellow line, which is a 57 PCI. So if we were going to increase our PCI by five point, bringing, bringing Millbury up from 57 to 62, so we essentially almost doubling on our investment on street. We would have to spend close to $5 million at about $4.6 million per year in order to do so. So if money is no issue, and Millbury can spend as much as we want, we would love to spend about $8.6 million a year for the next five years. If we continue to invest in that kind of money in our street, we should be able to bring our PCI up to 85 in five years. So I'm going to take a little, really quick pause here, and ask if the Commissioner has any questions so far. If not, I will continue to move on. And this curve, I won't go into it. This is just to show you a different, a different maintenance. If we are not going to do any more maintenance in five years, our PCI would deteriorate from 57 to 50. Again, I'm going to pass real quick to see if Commissioner have any question. If not, I will move on.
Are there any questions? No, I think you can move on, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Joe. So I just want to talk about fiscal year 19, 2019, 2020. So in 2020, we received a federal grant, one bay area, sorry about that, one bay area, cycle to $370,000 to repay for locks were dried. And also part of the year 2020 paving, we still got one more street to do, which is called Adapso. And we will be starting that fairly soon. And the next project that I want to showcase really quickly is the TDA Article 3, which is the Millbury Transit Station to Spur Trail Gap Closure Project. Again, it is a TDA Article 3 grant funding, funded project. So here, this is Manchester, and this is El Camino. We are putting in, we actually put in a bike lane from Millbury Transit Station along Manchester all the way to McNolia. And then from McNolia, we make a right-hand turn to go to, to go to Ashton. From Ashton, we, we actually built a little new trail, get gap closure, spur trail connection at the Sill Optimus Park, and this one has been completed. And hopefully, we'll do a grand opening in the next couple of months. The last picture is on the right here. This is a traffic calming project at Millbury and Ashton, where we pull the, the curb extensions out. We reduce the distances where pedestrian need to walk together across the street by introducing curb extension. And then another project that we are currently working on this year is the ACQ One Affordable Housing and Sustainable Community Grant. This is a $2 million grant from the Core Housing at TOD2. Millbury will be putting in bicycles, bikes, and pedestrians improvements along, along the city alignment. So primarily, we'll be beginning that the transit station right about there. And we're going to extending the BPAC facility north into San Bruno by San and Sacramento Elementary School, and also along Millbury Avenue, Overpass, across the US 101. We'll be doing some interim safety project here while we are still waiting to get funding to build the pedestrian bike bridge across 101. So this is a map that show you what streets that Millbury has paved prior to 2017. So all the blue line, those are the line signifies to that had been repaved in the last five to 10 years. And here's a map that show that what streets that we are going to be paving for the next five years. So just real quick for fiscal year 2022, there are three streets that we are going to be paving, Santa Barbara. Do you think, I want to have any question? Not, I will continue. So we have Santa Barbara, Lorry Lane, and also Upper Manchester. Those are the streets that we are going to be paving. So besides paving this street, we are going to be doing slowly seal on about half a dozen street also in summer of 2022. And here's a table of the capital expenditure plan, which is a proposed plan to the City Council from last Tuesday. So we have a half a million dollar slowly seal project I briefly touched on. And then the three streets that we will be paving, those are all going to be total up to about a million and a half. And then we also requested a funding of $250,000 to continue with site what repair and street tree project. And hopefully, we'll get an additional $100,000 to continue with traffic calming project. And we talked about the ACQ grant, the $3 million Core Housing Grant, that $3 million is divvy up into three fiscal years. So by, by the end of 2023, 24 fiscal year, we would have completed the BPAC improvement near the station. And lastly, we have the TFCA grant from Millbury Avenue and Helen Drive, and those are also traffic calming type of project that will be doing curb extension to reduce a distance a pedestrian has to walk across the street. And this is a TFCA grant, Transportation Fund for Clean Air to the Ed District. So next, we'll be talking about sanitary sewer capital plan. So this is a graph that show the expenditure plan for the next four years, beginning in fiscal year 21, 22. And here's a map. And the blue area was all the sewer basin that we had replaced the sewer pipeline since 2017. And this is the famous Madrona Basin, which is one of the oldest neighborhood in Millbury, that we have a lot of leaking pipe joints in this neighborhood. And this map would show you what the city is planning to do for the next five years. So this orange line, those are going to be the basin that we will be fixing in '22, summer of fiscal year 2022. So those are the Hillcrest North Basin, those are a fairly large basin. And again, here is a capital expenditure timetable for fiscal year 21, 22, which is the first row. And really quickly, I will just walk you through a couple of the bigger project. We look at the sewer replacement project totaling about $4.7 million. And also, we continue to do CCTV inspection, which is we, we internal inspections of sewer pipeline and also sewer lateral and sewer main replacement. We'll continue with a half a million dollar program to replace sewer lateral and sewer mainline that we found broken throughout the year. And the second half of the table, sorry about that, the second half of the table down below, those are the treatment plant type of project. A couple, a couple of projects that I just want to really quickly talk about is we actually looking at replacing the codegen system. My PowerPoint is, I want to listen to me. So this is a project that we are doing planning right now. We are putting in a new codegen system to create, using the bio gas on the treatment plant digest and turn it into electricity to run the treatment plant. But going into the next slide, and I briefly talked about internal inspections of sewer pipeline. And this is why you typically would see, you would see a lot of wood balls inside the sewer pipe. Because of the recent drought and also the drop from 2014 and 2015, tree roots tend to migrate into pipe joint, looking for moisture. Therefore, you would see a lot of wood intrusion in the sewer system, and therefore, they also cause blockages. And these are some pictures showing how manholes and pipeline being installed in our city. And here's a pictures of Madrona Pump Station, of east of El Camino, off of Santa Street. And this is one of the major pump station in Millbury that we, we will be replacing in '23 and '24. I'm going to pass for really quick and see if the Commissioner have any questions so far on streets and sewer. If not, I will proceed to Water Capital. All right, so here's the expenditure plan for Water Capital Improvement Program. So we're getting the blue lines, those are the water basin that we had replaced the mainline since prior to 2017. And here, the pipeline that we will be replacing next year and then the following four years. And here's the capital expenditure table for Water Capital. By far, one of the most important project that we will be doing in Millbury is to replace the Skyline Water Tank, which is showing here at three and a half million for fiscal year 21, 22. And the project will be carried out over to fiscal year for a total aggregate project cost of $7 million, and we fund it over to fiscal year. So that is by far our current focus on the water system. And also, we are going to be embarking on designing about a mile to a mile and a half of water main replacement project for, to be constructed in summer of '22 and '23. And here's a pictures of Skyline Tank. As you could see, this is a tank that owned by Burlingame. We colocate with Burlingame up on the west side, so 280 on SFUC land. And these two tanks belong to Millbury. So we will be replacing the steel tank with a concrete tank. So we are combining that into a one and a half million gallon tank, and it will be a pre-stress concrete tank. And one of the other important project that we will be doing on the water system is the SCADA system. Great SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. So it is, in a, in a way, it is acting like an alarm system, except it also has a data collection point that has a historical data that they collect in the unit that we could refer back to. So I'm going to pass real quick to see if the Commissioner have any questions on Water Capital so far. If not, I will move on to Stormwater Capital. And Stormwater Capital Storm is one of those infrastructure in Millbury that has a lot of needs, except we don't have a lot of funding for that. We collect about $260,000 in revenue a year, every calendar year, to the county tax or to fund the Stormwater Program. So the rest of the budget is being subsidized by General Fund. So the only project that we will be focusing on this year is the project 104 Cowan Canal Pump Station Rehab. It is a pump station that we, we co-own with Burlingame along the south side of Cowan Canal. And Millbury's share of the rehab costs is about 40%. It is based on the flow volume at the pump station. Burlingame has about 60%, 60% of the flow volume from the pump station. And the same go for the canal maintenance. So Millbury are responsible for one half of the canal. Burlingame is responsible for the other half of the canal. And next, I'm moving to Parks Capital Improvement Program. So far, we are focusing on replacing Central Park Equipment Replacement. And that is actually a fairly expensive equipment to replace. We estimated that to be close to $600,000, to about $550,000 to replace the playground equipment. The reason why it is a high priority for the city is because the Red Center is scheduled for grand opening next summer, and we want to have the Central Park Playground Equipment to be replaced at the same time when we, when we reopen our recreation center. So here are a few pictures of the playground equipments. They're signed, Marina Vista. Oh, one last thing, I just wanted to quickly talk about one of the fitness court at Millbury Spur Trail. As you can see at the lower right-hand corner picture, we got a grant to the Peninsula Healthcare District. So we will be installing a fitness court adjacent to the skate park right off of Millbury Avenue. So I'm very excited about this project. So this is the total expenditure summary for fiscal year 2021, 22. I'm going to stop here and see if the Commissioner has any question.
Do any of the Commissioners have questions?
So.
We lost video on Commissioner Wong.
Yes, I have a question. So what are we hoping to achieve with this review? And, you know, there's just And, you know, there's just a lot of questions that I have and a lot of comments. I could probably type up a letter and submit them, but for the purposes of our meeting here, how much time and what do we want to achieve with this?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Joe.
Okay, if we can have the I mean, I think just to be clear before we go into questions, I think the main objective is what is on the agenda, which is we want to make sure that the projects are consistent with the general plan. That's the portion that's our job. We're not to go into the budget. That's that's city council's task. So our purview is, is are these projects that are here consistent with the general plan? And I think we should try to limit our discussion to that as much as possible, but if Ross or Mr. Motto wants to further comment.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Joe. That is correct. The task for the commission tonight is to find that the project, the capital improvement plan is consistent with the general plan. The general plan, as you know, is a document that lays out the growth of the city and how the city is going to be built in the neck, in the future. And the commission is tasked to find whether or not that these projects that that affect the physical environment of the city is in fact consistent with the general plan. As you can see in Mr. Fielding's staff report, the staff recommends that you know, that the commission make the finding that it does in fact meet the the goals and the policies of the general plan.
And then another background question is that it seems like this is part of a five-year plan, and we're already embarking on the second year. So is there has already been established this priority of projects and this list of projects and then establish the needs and the use of the funds and the money for these?
We, if I may, we are going back to city council on June eighth because like I mentioned earlier, the revenue is coming quite a bit lower than the expenditure plan. So we need to do some trimming. So this is what I just went through earlier, which is a proposal expenditure plan based on our needs. But in reality, we are not going to be able to do every single project on that list. So we were going to be present some more slimmed down version to the city council at the June eighth city council meeting for adoption as part of the budget process.
On the, I guess, just and then just another question to clarify the background. On the sewer CIP and the water CIP, it says that there is available funding, an amount of thirty million for the sewer and about nineteen million for the water. So that funding, is that already in the coffers and is that money dedicated for those sewer and water type projects?
That is correct. Those are the enterprise fund fund balance that is saved up to fund the capital program. Correct.
So those monies cannot be used for any other type projects, just only sewer and the water?
That is correct. Those are enterprise fund and the restricted my general fund that can be used for any type of project. Water fund can only be used for water, water related projects.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to establish the background and the setting for these. Okay.
Any question to Mr. Davis? Okay, do we have any public members of the public who wish to speak?
You do not.
Do not. Okay, so we will close the public comment time for this. And then, do I have a motion that as the staff has recommended, we do need to continue this to a date uncertain? So in order to do that, we do need to have a motion, I believe, and to to hold on continuing this so that so that there can be further notice on this project.
I'll make that motion to continue to another date unknown.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Wong, and I will vote, yeah, do we, how do we do roll call vote, I guess?
Yeah, so I'll I'll take the roll call vote. Commissioner, Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Joe?
Yes.
Okay, motion to continue this to a date uncertain passes. So this item will be renoticed and be posted on the city's calendar.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, new business. I don't see anything here. Item number nine, staff updates. So if the staff can go ahead and punch into those, please.
Sure, yes. So just a brief update on the planning department staff. We have received a notice that and went on to communicate to the commission that assistant planner Linda Robertson is has resigned from the city, so she's no longer with us. And we have been to be embarking on a recruitment to fill her vacancy. So we thank her for all her service to the community and to the commission. We will, you know, we still have Mr. Fielding and Mr. Nestor Cuvera, who will be, they'll be seeing a lot of in the next few months. Additionally, staff will also be seeking help from consultant firm to assist with some of our larger development projects, just because we have a lot of projects coming in lately. So so that's the update on Miss Robertson. And also, as you probably know, our administrative assistant, community administration assistant Bernadette Kuntz is now with the finance department. We miss her a lot, as you can probably know, it's a, it's very, very difficult to to keep the operations of the planning division running smoothly without her. But we have received a signed offer for her replacement. We did send out a recruitment a few weeks ago, actually, probably several weeks ago. We did extend an offer and that was accepted. And going through pending background checks and procedures, we should expect her to begin sometime mid-June. So she probably won't be available for the next planning commission meeting, but the meeting after that, be happy to introduce her to you. So we're excited about that. And then after this recruitment, we'll be moving forward with a recruitment to fill, to backfill Ms. Robertson's position. And in regards to development projects, staff is very proud to announce that we have received a formal application for to redevelop the site at Two Ten Adrian. It is the site that is along South Station Road, north of Adrian Road, east of the tracks. That project is to redevelop into a two hundred and sixty thousand square foot biotech building. We are just beginning the review of that project, and we have sought assistance from an outside firm to process that project and a future project in this Millbury Station area specific plan. So that should be coming, it's probably a while, probably be towards the end of the towards the end of fall, early winter for that project to come before the commission, but we are excited for that. Just in kind of projecting out to future planning commission meetings, we we have been a little slow in the beginning of the year, but things are picking up very, very quickly. I think a lot of people a little bit more confident about the economy. We we do have several conditional use permits for the commission in the next couple of months, as well as single-family second-story design review projects. And also, on June seventh, we also plan to take the commission, to the commission, a affordable housing ordinance. So community development director Smith provided study session item to the council last month, or actually a few weeks ago, and then so that'll be going to the commission next month. So that's that's another exciting item. And incidentally, we are restarting the general plan, and we actually have been meeting with our consultants to kind of project the path forward and the different milestones. So so towards the end of the year, you'll see a lot more meetings about that. So that's exciting. And that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, do you have any updates? I know you did a meeting on what it takes to be a planning commissioner. And I didn't get to join it because I was in the middle of something else, but any update on that and any when we're planning to have another planning commissioner join us?
Yeah, right. So we did have a recruitment meeting with with members of the public. We did receive to a couple of residents who participated and asked questions. So we're hopeful that we'll get some candidates. We don't, I don't know the whether we receive an actual application yet, but it was good to see some interest. We did get, I believe, there's three people in attendance during that. I don't think that we'll have another commissioner before July one. But but after July one, I think.
Commissioner Davis, were you gonna say something?
No, I was gonna say, I think applications are due June one. So yeah.
Yeah, you're right. That's correct. Thanks.
I did get to see the recording and it was really well done. So thank you for doing that. Okay, and then commission comments. Item number ten, commission comments.
I got a question. When are we gonna be in person?
That's a great question. That's a million dollar question. So as at this this point, the city hall remains closed to the public. I haven't heard any any decision yet to move to in-person meetings. I don't think it'll happen in in the next month, so for the next couple of meetings. But I think that, you know, as I hear, I can I can let the commissioners know, but as of today, there hasn't been any final plans or a certain date to to move back to in-person meetings.
Any other comments?
I will say so I will say that just kind of anecdotically, colleagues in other cities are exploring the possibility of doing hybrid meetings. I think each city is a little different. Some cities want more, you know, Zoom meetings to allow for greater access to public meetings for those who can't, you know, leave their child at home, they can still participate. But I think some other cities are looking towards a hybrid type of setup where people can communicate and provide public comment through Zoom as well as in person. But they're still kind of, it's all very new to everybody and be happy to to provide a further update as we have plans finalized.
Commissioner Davis, you, you're done? Okay, Commissioner Wong?
So just to comment on planning. So with the new general plan coming out and with all these major developments with the TOD projects and, you know, the changing face of our city and wanting to revitalize downtown. I'm just suggesting that for this next meeting, when we do review these CIP plans, there's a lot to really consider how to integrate these CIP projects and the prioritization of them to address the future plans. Like if we do have this Grand Boulevard for El Camino, you know, it squeezes down the lanes and the traffic, then I imagine that's going to start routing traffic through the neighborhoods. So so we need, we need to really plan and anticipate how these traffic patterns, you know, would develop and making sure that we design these streets and infrastructure to handle that or to address it to make sure that we don't have those secondary impacts like just rerouting traffic all through the neighborhoods. And if there's a lot of people in squeezed in these high-density areas, you know, then our parks and our open space will want to develop those. I'm not sure spending, you know, all this the money on recycled water projects, like fifty-five million dollars in the plans and and, you know, pedestrian bridge or biking bridge across the freeway for, you know, is it twenty million dollars or so? If that's the best use of the monies. So just a heads up that I have a lot of comments and discussions, I think, when we talk about these CIPs coming up.
Noted. Thank you.
And I, and any, any announcements that we have?
Announcements, we did have one events with Communities United last Saturday. It was a rally to promote inclusivity and safety for all, especially in our Asian community. It was a good turnout. We had many politicians from up and down the peninsula, not just the city of Millbury, but it was how the San Mateo Park and our Congresswoman Jackie Sparrow was there. It was really a good, good format and open format so that it was they pulled in a lot of politicians, a lot of council members from up and down the cities in the peninsula, and it was a forum where people could mingle and talk and get the ear of their local leaders. So it's really good good event for all.
Okay, anything else? Do you have any? Okay, seeing none, then we'll just go ahead to adjourn, adjourn the meeting for today. So everybody have a good evening and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Evening. Goodbye.